Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilman Duper.
Present.
Councilman Daley.
Here.
Councilman Brower.
Here.
Mayor Potemperie Popescu.
Here.
And Mayor Riggsby.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. We'll begin with the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Councilman Daley. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Thank you. Now it's time for oral reports from the public on any items not on the agenda. We have a comment from Barney Barnett.
Good evening. My name's R.A. Barnett. I go by Barney. And it's been quite a while since I've been here, but I have been to your meetings before. In fact, I'd like to refer to you from a letter, about a letter from January 24th of 2002. That's quite a ways back. But what it involved was the City of Loma Linda and the city council members supported a MetroLink stop in the High Grove area way back then. To bring you up to date now, there's now a half a billion, excuse me, 500 billion study that's being conducted by Southern California Association of Governments. And what that means is it's a 23-year plan for the entire region for transportation. And High Grove, as you have supported in the past, has an ideal location for a regional MetroLink station. Riverside County Transportation Commission owns 17.22 acres right now, right next to the track between San Bernardino and Riverside. And there's MetroLink trains going through there seven days a week. And the reason I'm here this evening is to see if you could get us a letter of support again for the regional station at High Grove. And the deadline is February the 14th to be submitted to the SCAG people with a copy to High Grove Happenings Newspaper that I, my wife and I run. And we just like to say that it's been a while since we've been here, but it may not affect this immediate community right now, but in the region in the long term, because it's a 23-year plan. Just up the street from this High Grove location, within a mile, is the Spring Mountain Ranch project. I don't know if you've ever heard of that, but it's a plan where there's 2,500 lots already to build on. What happened is the developer sold it to the builder. The economy went down, and they haven't built anything yet. But we know that in the next few years, when this economy returns, we've got an ideal location, because we have 1,550 acres of vacant land in High Grove. And part of that is the Spring Mountain Ranch that's entirely ready. All the amenities are in. The underground pipelines, flood control, electrical lines, sewer lines, everything are in. So all that has to be done is scrape the tumbleweeds off of the lots that are already there and start building. So we're looking for support for our High Grove station. And what I'd like to do, I have some information for you. Information is available on our website at www.HighGroveHappenings.net. And that is our website. Please look it over. And we'd like to get a letter from you before the 14th in support of this. Now, within the last week, couple of weeks, I've been in Riverside, San Bernardino, Chamber of Commerce meetings, a lot of different places, and the SCAG meetings, and trying to get some support for this. And we have been getting emails sent to SCAG supporting this. So since 2002, it's a long ways back, and we'd like to have continued support for that, if you could get us a letter. So I'll leave this with you folks, and appreciate your cooperation again to just give us a little bit more support. Now, I know that City of Grand Terrace has supported this back in 2001. In fact, they've updated it two different times to say that the information was too old. We didn't want to have that happen, to say the information that was previously received was too old. So they've updated it two different times, and we're asking you if you please could update it again by the 14th of February. Thank you very much.
Is there any other member of the public that would like to speak on any non-agenda item? Okay, I see none. We'll move on. We'll deal with conflicts of interest as appropriate. Our first item is public hearing, Council Bill R-2012-07 Determining Costs Related to the Fall 2011 Weed Abatement Program.
I'll go ahead and move the item. I guess you can make the report if you'd like. I'm just moving it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight just to give you a brief report on our just completed fall weed abatement program, and ask that you, and you have a packet there, ask that you receive and approve our report, and ultimately adopt the resolution that will ultimately establish assessment and liens on the properties that we had to, the city had to pay to get abated. Briefly, as you know, we abate, or we are tasked, the Fire Department and specifically the Fire Prevention Bureau is tasked with making sure that any fire hazards or buildup of weeds or tumbleweeds are abated as needed. And we typically do, or we do have two seasons. We have in the spring where we typically have lots of just basic weeds, and the one we just finished in the fall where we deal with the big tumbleweeds primarily. Our process started September 6th. We actually do inspections of over 220 parcels. By October 13th, we do the assessments of the parcels, and then notifications are sent out to the property owners. By October 13th, if they haven't cleared the lots themselves, we have the city contractor take care, or give him his list. He takes care of it. And then he gives us the invoices. Those invoices are sent to the property owners. If they pay them, then we're done. Ultimately, you have in your list now a list of, or in your packet, a list of 13 properties. For whatever reason, they decide, usually, those are the same ones that we always get. They decide just to let it go to lien, and then when they pay their taxes once a year, they pay for it then, and the city recoups the cost after that. So unless you have any further questions, I just ask that you adopt that resolution. And those 13 properties will have that assessment placed against them, and the city will receive their monies back once the property taxes are paid.
I guess I'll second the original motion.
Is there any discussion?
This is a public hearing.
Oh. Where's my hammer? We'll open the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this topic? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Is there any opposition to the motion? Hearing none, it's adopted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to item number two, approving a plan to appropriate $75,000 from the Art in Public Places Fund for use of developing a 9/11 memorial.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you tonight is consideration of that memorial design and appropriation of funds from Art in Public Places. You'll recall that our Firefighters' Association petitioned and received an I-beam artifact from the World Trade Center. The vision for that artifact was to become a centerpiece of a memorial in a public place in our community. With that vision, that we had create a place of respect, remembrance, and also importantly, education for future generations. That was that the Fire Department campus was an appropriate place for such a memorial. So that's where the design work and ideas have really centered around. Soon after our receiving of the artifact, one of our community partners that the association works frequently with, the Office of Philanthropy at the Medical Center actually connected our association with a construction group, Tilden Coil, and who actually have a lot of experience with such memorials in the inland empire. Our Firefighters' Association met with Tilden Coil, shared their thoughts and ideas, and they were quickly embraced. Tilden Coil brought in other design, Community Works Design Group, to also collaborate on the project and start to work on some design ideas to bring back to the association. They've decided on a design that they would like to bring to you for your consideration tonight, and also report that not only has Tilden Coil embraced the project and become full partners in a design and construction effort, but also in fundraising. Ultimately, their total project design is in the neighborhood of 263,411. But of that amount, $188,000 has already been raised and committed to in terms of materials, work effort, partners that work with the designer and the constructor on a regular basis. The idea is that the fundraising would not stop, that the association would like to continue their fundraising efforts and give more members of the community a chance to also contribute to this, however, with the goal of unveiling something. On September 11, 2012, the project planning and really getting the work has to start now. So the idea is that with approval of funds, appropriating funds from Art in Public Places, that they could move forward with that confidence, that there is a financial commitment there to get this done, although they would like to continue the fundraising effort. The Art in Public Places is funds that come from developers that are set aside for that, for the use of development of art in public places. The statue up at Hold of Crooks is one other example of something I recall those funds being used for, but it is taken off of development impact fees solely for that purpose, and does not impact operational funds or general fund in any way. Tilden Coil and Community Works Design Group are here tonight, and along with our Firefighters' Association, would like to present the design and the vision to you at this time. So Dane from Tilden Coil and Tim from Community Works, I'll hand it over to you guys.
Thank you, Chief. My name's Tim Maloney. Maybe if we could get that. We'll show the design. I'm the Community Works Design Group, and we're based out of Riverside, and here to present the scheme, which was designed and developed with the help of the firefighters. The goal of the design was to commemorate not just, well, the actual day and all the events of the actual day. It's very interesting that on this particular day, 9/11, 10 years ago, well, be 11 years ago this year, the start of the day was called the International Day of Peace. Very interesting that that is the particular day that the event happened. And so we're going to start from, actually, from the very first point, is that the very start of the day. And then some of the, the Fire Department and our team are going to work together and indicate with a series of plaques, which will go, you can see on the top of the Pentagon, in essence, going around there, what actual date events they want to highlight. So the design, it is to commemorate the whole day, and especially the major three events, the crash into the Pentagon. That's why the shape of the actual monument is in a Pentagon shape. The actual I-beam, I'll show you, is, and the Twin Towers are there in the center. And then we actually have the actual point of time where the Pennsylvania flight crashed in the Pentagon, and that's the little portion that's taken out there. So let me give you a couple of other views of the site, or of the design. I think you all know where it is, where the design is. It's right next to the fire station entrance where the trucks come in and out. And we're going to be relocating one memorial tree, which is up in the upper left-hand corner. It's a crepe myrtle. We're relocating that tree. But the rest of it is just turf area right now, so it'll be really easy to work with the site. Okay, thank you. And we're also moving the flagpole, which currently sits right about over here. We're going to relocate that, or perhaps do a new flagpole in this location here. Great, thanks. I'll give you a couple of other views. Coming in from the street view, you can actually see the, be able to walk right up to it. And that's one of the things we wanted to make it was, so it's very accessible to the general public as they walk by. School buses can park next door or up along the street. They could even park here in front of the street and unload the kids, and then go park somewhere else. So they have really good access to the site. These are, will be the two pieces of the actual, of replicas of the Twin Towers. And this is the actual piece of steel, which will be embedded between the two concrete towers. There will be water elements coming up around through here. This whole area is depressed, and there will be no standing water. And the rock material around this will be what's called a shock cobble. It's kind of a jaggedy, kind of rough-looking, a rock material, which almost looks like rubble from the towers. And so the water will just kind of be, kind of foaming up really around the two towers. The students will be able to actually stand or sit all along this bench area here. This is just a 12-inch-high bench for the younger kids to stand up. And actually, you can see where they can stand out, and they can also read then what's on the actual plaques. These will be actually granite pieces. This is all concrete material all around through here. And these will be granite pieces, which will be placed on top and commemorating a particular event, maybe when one of the towers fell, that sort of thing. And those will be all, we'll be working with the Fire Department on exactly how many of those we're going to have around the area. I mentioned the wall break earlier. That's located right there. And that's, that'll be the point in time when the plane came down in the Pennsylvania area and dug into the actual field. All around the back through here, we're kind of showing, these will be grasses. They won't be this tall. This is just a graphic representation. But this whole area will be not a mowed grass, but more of a pasture-looking grass, much like where the plane actually crashed into the Pennsylvania area. I think I mentioned the fountain before. Just another view of it, and some of the rubble pieces around through it, and the shock cobble, and the water, which will be coming up on all sides of it. So we, that's pretty much kind of the design and the intent of it. If you have some particular questions about it, material-wise, I can run through some of those. And Dane with Tilden Coil, who we've been working with, the actual builder of it, is here with us and can answer some other technical questions as well.
Looks very attractive. I do have a couple of questions. Can you describe what kind of lighting is going to be in place for both day and night? I assume night primarily.
Yeah. At nighttime, the actual, we'll have lighting all around the towers, and those will be lit up with kind of a glow to them. We probably also have some lights around and through the walls, just for safety and security. The flagpole will obviously be lit up as well.
And what's the material for the replicas of the Twin Towers that the?
It's a, it'll be poured-in-place concrete, and it'll be a ribbed material to look somewhat like the actual towers looked.
Looking at the color scheme, it looks like that cement would be a different color than what's on the sidewalks versus what's on the wall. Is that just for the drawing, or is, or do we have basically gray cement on all different?
It'll probably be a little more, more of a charcoal gray on this versus the surrounding area.
And then the, the part of the wall that's kind of blown out there, will the signage explain that?
Yes.
So they'll understand why there's?
Exactly.
What's missing?
The vision is that from the beginning, on the left, a group, if they were unattended, could certainly go through and have an interpretive tour and have the events of the day of 9/11.
Yeah, so the start of the day, start of the day over here to the actual end of the day, 24-hour period.
And then my last question is, it has to do with the water. Is that circulating? Or you, I think you said?
It is recirculating water, yes.
But it'll basically appear fairly still, or?
You won't even be able to see the water. It will just, it will just come up around and bubble up around the actual towers. There'll be a submersible pump and a basin down below. So everything flows to a low point right in the middle, and the pump will be actually right in there in the middle, submerged. So there'll be no standing water.
Will there be water sounds?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, when it's up and operating, it'll be, it'll be a nice sound, because there'll be, there's a little bit of street noise on Barton, so that'll be, have a nice sound to it as well.
Looks like a great idea and great design. Just a couple of technical questions, too. Always think of, you know, unintended uses. Is the water enough of a deterrent, you think, for naturally kids might tend to jump up on something like this and play on it, even though we hope there's not a lot of that? But what design elements do you have, and will the water be enough to keep that kind of activity from occurring readily?
I would imagine so. I mean, you know, kids being kids, they can, they could walk across there and through the water, I guess, if they want, and climb on it. Like I mentioned, this cobble material here is going to be very rough and jagged, and something you won't be able to pick up and throw or anything. So it's, it's not a surface like you would want to walk on, but obviously, kids could do that, I suppose, if they wanted to.
But at least the combination probably discouraged that.
Yes.
The other question, I always hate to, hate to think anytime you have wall-like structures, even though it's not a huge problem in our community, graffiti does sometimes seem to occur. Is it going to be designed in a way that it can be cleaned relatively easily if that unfortunately occurs?
Yeah. These walls around here will be also a dark gray, almost a black-type concrete. We did a similar facility in downtown Riverside. You may be familiar with, it's the Gandhi Memorial. And all of the walls around it are concrete, and they have a, it's really almost a charcoal-black concrete. So if people even happen to sit on it, or since they will be standing along here, you know, the black soles of your shoes, they, you know, it shows nothing, and it can easily be cleaned off and water with either, probably water jetted off if there's some graffiti or something on it. Yeah.
Thank you.
Wonderful design. Don't know that about it. I'm looking at aerial view of the actual location now, and there's a large tree in the corner. Will that tree be removed, as far as you know?
This one here?
No, it's actually by the street.
Oh, yes. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a tree currently right here, and that one will be taken out as well. You may remember, or not, there's a street light sitting right here, which is going to be relocated to right about there.
Okay. And as part of the building it, will you actually landscape everything around it as well?
Yes. This whole area here, including the upper terrace, will be re-landscaped. These three large crepe myrtle trees are going to be remaining. We're going to pull out all the shrub material in through here, and just, just so this whole area has a nice fresh look to it. But the actual quote-unquote pasture area will be this area here in front of the existing, and that's the existing brick wall, as you may recall. There will also be a decomposed granite. This whole area will have decomposed granite in it as well, which will be a stabilized material, which has almost like a cement material in it, so it's not subject to running off. And we're going to, and the grasses will be very drought-tolerant and more of a ziruscape-type look. And we're actually going to have a walking path from here, here to the flagpole, for them to raise and lower the flag as well.
That's wonderful. I was going to suggest that those bushes behind that are not as very attractive right now.
No, they're, sorry.
The other question I had, kind of looking ahead, does it have the ability to add sound to it, if you wanted to have speakers with music or perhaps announcements? Is that even, I know a lot of museums and memorials have that ability now. I'm just wondering if that's, and I'm thrilled about the fact that you guys are able to do this inexpensively, as far as I can tell, because this is, could be significantly more expensive based on what I'm seeing here. But have you given any thought to that, or?
You mean as far as like built-in speakers or something like that?
The ability to add?
We certainly can put some, you know, plugs around here, because we're going to have power here for the lights and for the, for the pump. So, and the lights around here, we could certainly have some, maybe some jacks on the back, which are locked or something for, to bring in, portable.
Well, the option of adding, you know, might end up being an actual instrument, as in, that's probably not the right word, technology that could be used at later time. You know, there's a lot of movements now with EFI where they can sensor by there, and something turns on.
Oh, I see.
Things of that nature.
So some description of the events could also be playing?
I don't know what it could be. I'm just noticing, I've seen that in other memorials and other services, where they know you're in front of it, now you have the option of hearing something. Or it might have music playing at a certain time, just nicely in the background. I know it's outside, and you may not be able to hear it.
Quite honestly, we had not thought about that, but we could certainly look into it.
Okay, that's all I wanted to address. But wonderful, wonderful design.
Thank you.
I really like it.
I think you kind of answered my question, but I was just curious as to the, the purpose of the water, what significance or?
A couple of different reasons for the water. One is to actually try and create...
A barrier?
Well, I guess three, really. A barrier, but also, you know, when the towers collapsed, there was fog and?
Smoke, right.
Things. So we tried to emulate some of that as well, as just some nice water noise, white noise, if you will. So when you're walking around here, it's kind of more of a somber-type area, and to cut out some of the street noise.
I was just wondering if there, if it was enough water to start building up, you know, moss or mold or whatever, you know?
No, 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 no. It's be very active water.
I just want to, once again, commend the Fire Department. I think to take the initiative to first get this repli, this, what do you call this thing that we've got, this big steel beam?
Artifact?
Artifact. That's the word I was looking for. Thank you. To get, to get this artifact and then raise the money and get a design put together. I mean, I'm impressed with the initiative that this has taken and the patriotism that it represents as well. So kudos. This is, this is a cool thing.
We're certainly glad to be a part of it. And I know Dane with Tilden Coil is instrumental and arm-twisting. Does a great job.
Thank you for your comments, Councilmember. Member of the, number of the design team members are in the audience, and you're right. This is stuff they're doing on their own, on their own time. And certainly, they've kept me abreast of where they're headed. But certainly, I'd like to thank you guys publicly as well for the time and effort that's spent to get us this far. guys publicly as well for, for the time and effort that's spent to get us this far. In addition, I'd also like to men, mention that Tilden Coil is also in, and, uh, community art, um, design works are also committed to staying engaged throughout the process. So they didn't just give us a design, they're here, um, along with their other partners and vendors to have a, a final product. Uh, so we're not just giving us this support and turning the firefighters loose. They are here, uh.
Start to finish.
Until we unveil this thing as, as a, as a neat inch element to our community, so. Thank you guys.
Last question, what kind of ti, assuming this is approved as is, what kind of timeline are we looking at for completion?
Let me ask, uh, Dane, Dane Brassard with Tilden Coil to come up and talk about that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Dane Brassard, Tilden Coil. We think it'll probably take, uh, three, four months. We're going to look at doing this probably two, three days a week. Um, I want to mention that most of our subcontractors that have stepped up to, uh, to help us with this are from the community. Um, Redlands, Ukiah, San Bernardino, Riverside. So these are guys that, that do work in your community and they're happy to get involved.
May I, may I comment that, uh, some of the, uh, the firemen volunteer to do part of the labor work themselves and, and the, uh, the city public works will help with the installation of the location system so that will help save them some money.
I, I have a finance question. How much money is in that account?
Three hundred thousand dollars, a little over three hundred thousand.
So we're, good. So, uh, is there a motion or I guess there was a motion before?
No.
Okay.
Is this a, is this a?
No, we're, we're supposed to approve the design, at least the concept of the design and the, uh, budgeting for it.
I'll make the motion, then we approve it as is.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, any opposition? Hearing none, it's, uh, approved. Thank you all very much. It's very impressive. Okay, we have the consent calendar and, uh, to my, to my perusal, it looks like number 10 probably deserves a little bit of discussion. Or is that something? Or at least explanation?
Yeah.
Mayor, council members, um, these are just revised versions of previously adopted, well, we adopted the EOPS, which is our enforceable obligations payments, which we have, which we needed to do. Um, and these will be forms that we submit to the county, the Department of Finance for their, to approve as we start to wind down the RDA. These will be our schedules to kind of live by and as, as far as payments we can make. So, um, because of the delay in the court's decision, the Supreme Court's decision and the new timeline, these are just revisions to the previously adopted schedules.
Are the revisions along the lines of things we've previously discussed?
Yes, with, uh, with our legal counsel advice, uh, we pretty much list everything.
Okay.
That's already in budget. And then we will take it, submit it to the county and if the county submits to the state and they, they can go over line by line and tell us that, no, you cannot, so. That's our plan.
If you don't ask, you don't get it.
Yes.
Correct.
That's our theory, okay.
And this is all due February 1st or?
Um, the EOPS, which is our enforceable obligation, has to be approved before January 31st. The ROPS, the recognized enforcement obligations, it, there's a, this is a preliminary draft which they, they suggested adopting before January 31st as well. When we start activating the accessory agency, we will go through the process of developing an initial recognized obligation payment and that then will get submitted to the county for, for review and approval.
I'm sure you're aware of it, but I, I was notified today that the Department of Finance at the California State, uh, created a website with detailed information about, okay, so you're, great, so you guys look at that as for guidance, okay.
Not.
Well, at least.
Not crystal clear, but a little.
Helps, okay, thank you.
There's also, uh, that Senate, Senate Bill 659, that's still working its way through and there's a, there's a hope that it's going to extend our deadline for another two and a half months, so. I'm just going to talk about that a little bit later and.
Since, since we're talking money and we're, uh, receiving, uh, or recording the completion of some other public works projects, I'm just curious, by losing the RDA money, uh, are we concerned at all about, uh, how we're going to be able to continue to sustain our streets? And I still have this pet fantasy of, of improving the deplorable on-ramps and off-ramps to the city of Loma Linda. Is there any hope that we're going to be able to address that?
Yes, sir. For this fiscal year, we have four projects that, uh, we're hoping to fund with RDA. The first is the sewer street project, uh, between Anderson and Campus. The second is the storm drain at, in Benton. Uh, the third is a sidewalk at West Location and the fourth one is, is your landscaping the off-ramp. So we might have to create, be creative, maybe use some money in our public place and create night art work at off-ramp and that can be done, sir.
Thank you very much. It was worth coming just to hear that.
Okay, is there an, a motion on the consent calendar?
I'll go ahead and move it.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion, any opposition? Hearing none, that is adopted. We move to reports of councilmen.
One, one quick item, just driving around the last couple of days, um, on Redlands Boulevard, it seemed like there's a whole proliferation of the little, I call them the A-frame temporary signs. And, um, you know, we've had discussions over the years in the past, uh, on what to do with some of those. I, I don't think anybody really objects to the temporary ones for real estate listings, but I don't know, if I owned a business that didn't have one of those signs on Redlands Boulevard, it just looks junky to me. So, don't have any specific action advocating, obviously not on the agenda, but just wonder if we can talk to a few of the people putting them up and say, you know, can we do a little better to make them look professional or not put them up or something?
The, the existing code allows those signs to be out during the day during business times and we can have code enforcement kind of follow up with them to make sure that they actually go away at night and aren't just 24-hour signs.
Just see if some of them we could make look a little more professional and maybe someday, see if there's any other ways we could, uh, improve it, but just throw that out there, thank you.
If we had a storefront improvement program, we could help with that, but the governor took that away.
I have one, one, oh, go ahead if you were. Uh, one other question, we've had, uh, two or three lively discussions and debates over, uh, what it means to be a healthy city and, uh, we have a group that wants to collaborate with us. Can you update us on just where that discussion is and where we anticipate it's going to go?
Yes, that's my, my contact. Can you take? I've been working with, uh, Loma Lind, the Healthy Loma Linda Coalition, um, then actually spent some time bringing that up to date on where we are in the process and we're planning on having a meeting at some point next week when they can get their schedules together and start working on some language that we can incorporate into the, the development code update that's fair and equitable and measurable and that we can bring forward as, as something to go into the future. So we're, we're working with them.
And first I'd go to the planning commission first for review and then it will come to you for, for review and approval.
And do they seem to feel that these discussions are meeting the needs that they've been expressing?
At, well, we haven't met yet, but at this point they, they, we've opened the door and, and they're walking through and it's actually, uh, there, there's, what we've done, there's been good dialogue at this point and, and very reasonable give and takes. So I think it'll, it'll work out well.
Who's the contact person you're working with?
Uh, Dr. Wellhausen.
I make a suggestion, depending on how your first meeting goes, maybe, uh, maybe we need to create some type of a, maybe a working group or working committee with one of us, uh, maybe, uh, assigned to it as well. And, uh, preferably, probably one of the three of us that, that voted yes on that other project, because that might, um, um, not only give us additional insight, but also maybe help, uh, temper the feelings that have, uh, that have kind of come out of it. So I'm, I'm actually volunteering if it comes to that point.
I'll, I'll let you know when the meeting is.
And just to let the press here know, you, you're being scooped again by national and international newspapers. In the last 24 hours, I've been approached by the New York Times, by ABC News and the Telegraph of London. So this story just keeps going around and around and around. When it stops, nobody knows.
And you're loving every minute of it.
I didn't respond to any of the requests because they had a deadline that I didn't even know was there. So just to let you know, it's still percolating. Loma Linda's in the news. We're a happening place. Any reports of officers other than, oh, you've got another?
I just, uh, I was going to give a report. I had the privilege of attending, um, or being appointed to some committees, uh, for the California League of Cities and I attended a committee meeting last week in Sacramento for a couple of days. Um, and, uh, I was appointed by what's called a presidential appointment to the, um, the Public Safety Committee. We have, uh, it are inland empire region league of cities, uh, appointees, there are, um, there are two appointees to public safety, both of which are council, council members from the city of Ontario and they're longstanding members. Um, and, uh, I thought it was kind of odd that neither of them had a background in any type of public safety, so, um, working through the league of cities, I was actually appointed by the president of the league of cities to, to sit on the, the board as a voting member, as a presidential appointee. Um, and that was actually really neat, got to, got to, uh, hear some of the different, um, programs and things that the league is involved with and, and also learn what we're supporting. Uh, and there was a couple of things that they brought to us. I know, uh, I believe the mayor and, and the mayor pro tem attended a league of cities dinner that was coincidentally scheduled at the same time I was in Sacramento, but there was a gentleman that spoke at your dinner. He showed up the next morning, uh, and spoke there in Sacramento too, so I'm sure you probably got most of the same stuff I did. But they covered, uh, a few things, they covered the governor's proposed budget and one of the comments that they made that was pretty interesting is they don't think, uh, that the state will be able to go after any more city money. Not because they don't want to, but because they have pretty much exacerbated every opportunity they could to come after, uh, local monies and there's really no other options for them. So now it's just about what they have to cut at their level. Um, obviously RDA, um, was a big hit for us, but, uh, that, the Supreme Court believed that that was outside of the protections of 22 and, and 1A and stuff, so. Just a little information that the league of cities and they're, they're best experts and I'm sure you said the same thing to you guys, that they don't believe that they can raid our funds any longer, but, uh, I'm sure they'll come up with something creative. The, uh, the other thing was that Senate Bill 659, which they're actively trying to get a lot of support for, um, I've got a little handout here on it and, um, the league of cities has employed a lot of powerful organizations and people and, uh, their report was they believe that they, they do have enough, um, of an interest up there in Sacramento to possibly push this before February 1st and that only would extend our deadline for two and a half months, just for more bookkeeping type stuff. Um, the other thing was we talked about specific issues related to public safety, um, uh, we talked a lot about, um, disaster preparedness and things like that, which was really neat. And, uh, I had the opportunity to brag a little bit about our city and the fact that we had just updated our plan and, um, and a lot of other agencies and cities had not and are not, have not been able to do that yet and, uh, I felt kind of good being able to talk about that. And there was one other thing, uh, that they had a guest speaker come up and talk about and it was kind of interesting, I have a big handout on it, I wish I had a, a PowerPoint presentation, I would show you a little bit of it, but there's something that's coming, um, it's a push from FEMA and the federal government and basically in the next two years, uh, all the cell phones in the country will have a feature where emergency alerts can be sent to a cellphone. And it's called, um, either CMAS or PLAN, which is what the feds call it, it's called Personal Localized Alerting Network. And basically if we had some type of a natural disaster or an emergency, we would be able to push out a message to, um, we could draw a boundary on a map and it would touch every cellphone that was connecting with a tower within that boundary and we could push out a message to them. And there's three, three levels of these messages. Uh, the first level is amber alerts and criminal type notifications. Let's say, you know, there's a kidnapping or, or, um, there's a, you know, some armed robbery suspect on the loose. Uh, the second level is, um, there's a pending earthquake or tornado and then the third level is message from the president that there's inbound nuclear warheads or something like that. What's interesting to me is that as a user, as a subscriber, you'll be able to turn off one and two, you can't turn off number three, that automatically comes. So if the president wants to talk to you, he can. Uh, they're, they're thinking that with the, uh, people buying new phones and just using up the old ones and all that, that they, they believe most of the phones will have this by about 2014, but I thought it was kind of interesting. On one hand, it's, uh, it's kind of neat, but on the other hand, it also tells you that Big Brother's just getting that far, that much further into your pocket, so. That was my report.
I'll just, uh, piggyback on that a little bit. Uh, the mayor and I attended a, uh, a talk slash dinner in Urisia Redlands on Thursday night and, um, one of the things that came out of it was very similar to what you stated, but unfortunately, a lot of the legislators understand the impact that RDA elimination will have on so many communities, but the one person who doesn't buy into it is the governor. And, um, it's great that there's support for that legislation. Unfortunately, from the last message that I got from the league of cities, I don't know if you read it, it sounds like his quote was that we cannot delay this funeral any longer. And, um, once again, one of the things they emphasized to us is that we need to try to mobilize the community and have them call their, the, our state representatives and let them know that this is impacting us a great deal. It's going to impact Loma Linda and, and its services and we're a small city, um, you know, it's going to be hundreds and thousands of people across the state, uh, being laid off, on top of the fact that we'll have limited services as a result, so it, it's a, really a tragedy for our state, what the government has done to us.
Just one more political comment, um, it's, it's interesting because, uh, there were, there were a lot of speakers from both sides of the aisle politically and, and the one thing that everybody said was this governor's doing something that many before him have not and he is actually cutting, cutting, cutting and, uh, unfortunately, probably at the wrong time and too, little too late, but, um, but yeah, it's going to, it's going to get rough here pretty soon, I think.
Okay, any reports of officers? None, okay, then the city council is adjourned and we've never, well, I guess we can finish off the redevelopment agency, literally.
This would be our last meeting. Uh, we'll go ahead and convene the redevelopment agency, uh, we'll go up to item number one, the minutes.
Move them.
I hear them, I hear first, second, seeing the opposition, it's moved. Uh, second item is council bill R dash, actually redevelopment bill dash R 2012 dash 01, adopting an amendment enforceable obligation schedule and an amended preliminary draft reorganization obligation payment schedule, which I think is related to the items that we approved during, uh, our consent agenda, but just for the sake of.
Move it.
Seeing it approved, no opposition, it's, uh, moved. We are adjourned with the RDA. And I guess.
Rest in peace.
You can start our next authority. We have one more item. We now have the.
Yeah, do we, have we decided who's in charge of that?
The mayor.
Yes, right, right now, because at the last city council meeting, it's pretty much transferred from the, the city council to the housing authority. So the mayor is, is the, uh, the chairman of the, uh, the housing authority board and, and the, uh, the mayor pro tem be, can be a vice sheriff's and the rest will just be a member of the boards.
Okay, so it's, we, we now, one died and another's born. It's reincarnation.
Except that you don't get paid for this one, though, so.
Well, that thirty dollars. It's going to break us, okay. Uh, are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
We've already done the roll call, do we need to do it again? Okay, good. Uh, would the public like to speak? Would you like to be the, the first public speech about the housing authority? Okay, no takers. New business, item number one, LHA bill R dash 2012 dash 01, designation of housing authority officials. Thought we already did that.
Yes, uh, again, this is, um, just a little background that at the last city council meeting on January the 10th, the, uh, the city council, they eliminated the, um, RDA January the 10th, the, the city council, they eliminated the RDA housing, LOMOD housing, and created this, the housing authority board, which pretty much transferred the, the authority from the city council to the board. So that was done at the last city council meeting. This, at this meeting, what staff would like to do is request that you designated the city manager as executive director, and assistant city manager as assistant executive director, city attorney as a housing authority council, city clerk as the housing authority secretary, and our finance director as a finance officer, and we still have Mark Hips, in this case, as our outside legal counsel. And, and again, the, the conflict interest, the, it'll be similar to the RDA, I mean, the city, what's the word, municipal code, and, and, and so the meeting will be held at the same time as the city council meeting, which is on the fourth, I mean, on the second and the fourth Tuesday of the month. The personnel rule, I'll skip one more thing, the personnel rule also is, is the same as the, the city council municipal code. That's in my report.
Couple of questions, and actually it was brought up to me by Senator Dutton's assistant. All the RDA properties are now subject to be disposed of by the new entity. We own properties that are housing property, and we're 100% sure that it doesn't relate to that, in other words, those properties are not to be disposed of?
Correct.
Correct, okay. So the other question I had was, this housing authority stays in existence for how long? As long as we manage the properties?
Do you have an answer? From what I understand is, right now, there's no answer, but eventually it will go away because eventually, no?
No, the housing authority will stay in place as long as you, the, the city elects to have it in place. If you guys decide to let it go, it will go to the state housing.
Unless, unless the county develops one.
Yeah, if the county decides to.
They don't have one, apparently, from what I've heard.
It may not, perhaps for our next meeting is a suggestion, just so we all get better informed, maybe we can provide us a list of exactly what homes we have ownership of, so we have some idea what we're supposed to be managing here. I know it was under the RDA, but it helps kind of rehash.
Actually, one of the suggestions by the legal counsel has been that we adopt memorandums from the city, listing all the properties for each, which ones will go to the accessory agency, which ones go to the housing authority. So we'll be doing that as part of that.
Excellent, okay, thank you.
When, up in Sacramento, they were talking about how the city of Los Angeles decided not to create a housing authority, and the county of Los Angeles elected not to take it either, and so now, it's now the purview of the state, but it had to go to the county first, so I don't know.
That's the state's punishment.
Right, no, it is the state's punishment, and the state's not happy about that. Oh, well.
So is there a motion on this LLHA bill?
I'll move it.
Second.
Any discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. The Loma Linda Housing Authority is adjourned. And we don't have any other organizations, so we're done. Thank you all for coming.